Okay, we're live, everyone.
You ready?
Ready? Okay. Good evening, everyone. The meeting will come to order. So before we get started, I want to explain the new seating arrangement to those of you who are watching at home. So we have two members of our council. Council members Naidu and Vartan at tables. We've got some talking. Okay, all right. So basically, before we get started, I wanted to explain the new seating arrangement to those of you who are watching at home. So we have two council members on the floor. Council members Naidu and Vartan are at the tables, as is our city attorney. Council members Little and O'Sullivan are participating by videoconferencing, as is our city administrator, Michael Rogers, and you can see them all up on the screen. Most of our department heads, who usually attend the meetings, will be participating by telephone. Our two department heads who are here are our CFO, Tammy Baldwin, and our chief, our fire chief, Eric Evers, who's also the chief of the OEM, and he'll be updating us on that as well. We've made these changes to observe the social distancing guidelines that were put in place by the CDC and by the governor. And for those of you at home, this meeting is not open to members of the public for the same reason. We encourage you to send comments on agenda items, as well as for the public comment period. And our clerk will be receiving those emails in real time. So, and she'll be reading them out during the meeting. So bear with us, we'll make every effort to address them all, but it's all coming in in real time. So if you have a comment, please send it to cityclerk@cityofsummit.org. Please put your full name and your address in the body of the email. Indicate the topic of your comment in the subject line, so we can sort them. So with that, I will turn it over to Madam Clerk. Would you please read the adequate notice?
Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the city clerk's office in preparation of the council annual meeting notice and the special meeting notice dated March 19th, which was properly distributed and posted per statutory requirements. Please be advised, for those in the room here, that the fire exits are to my right, your left, and at the back of the room. And with your permission, councilor, I will dispense of the listening system, since we don't have an audience.
Of course. Oh, right, okay. So now we're ready for a roll call. Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Bowman.
Here.
Ms. Hairston.
Here.
Ms. Little.
Here.
Mr. Naidu.
Here.
Mr. O'Sullivan.
Here.
Mr. Vartan.
Here.
President Fox.
Here.
Okay, let's see. For the Pledge of Allegiance, I would like our fire chief and our CFO to please lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with no bounds.
So Madam Clerk, can you please read the notices regarding closed session and hearings and comments, please?
A closed session meeting, as authorized by state statute, was announced and held prior to the start of this meeting, and the known items for discussion were listed on the published closed session agenda. Please be advised, the council meetings are broadcast live on Comcast Channel 36 and Verizon Channel 30, and rebroadcast on Thursdays and Saturdays on HTV on Comcast 36 and Verizon 33. Tonight's meeting will be livestreamed through YouTube. If you would like to watch tonight's meeting through YouTube Live, please go to the city's website at cityofsummit.org and click on the YouTube icon at the bottom of the homepage. While this council meeting is being broadcast live and members of the governing body are participating in person or remotely, City Hall is currently closed to the public due to COVID-19 pandemic. However, steps have been put in place to accommodate public input during the meeting. Through the public notice, the city clerk's office advised that the public, if the public wishes to have, to make, ask a question or make a comment during these proceedings, they may do so by sending an email, as the council president said, to the city clerk at cityclerk@cityofsummit.org in advance, or do so by sending, during the meeting as well. We will do our best to accommodate all those members of the public who wish to provide public comment, and will identify the individual providing the written comment, and will read and/or summarize the comment publicly. And the administration and/or members of the governing body will provide answers and/or responses when applicable. In addition, if you are sending an email during the meeting, please include your full name and address in the body of the email. In the subject line, please specify the matter that you're commenting on, such as public comment, or ordinance for hearing, or resolution with the number, or the subject. Only those emails that include the full name of the sender will be read during the meeting. For those present, if you are using electronic device to follow meeting agenda or need it for professional emergency contact purposes, please turn it off. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Now on to minutes for approval. Do I hear a motion to approve the regular and closed session meetings of March 10th?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. All right, and now we're on to reports. Madam Mayor.
Aye.
Thank you, Council President. It has been an eventful week, with Governor Murphy announcing a statewide stay-at-home order, and all nonessential retail businesses have been closed. People are advised to work at home if they can, with only critical businesses remaining open. Earlier today, I recorded an emergency alert asking people to stay at home and to practice safe social distancing. It is imperative that people follow Health Department recommendations. It is the only way we can control the spread of COVID-19 virus. With that in mind, the Summit Police Department will be issuing disorderly conduct citations to groups of 10 or more people who are not following safe social distancing practices. I understand that the weather is nice, and we all want to be outdoors with our friends and neighbors, but we cannot. We all need to take this crisis seriously and avoid contact with non-family members. While restaurants and bars are closed, many of them are providing takeout and delivery services. A list is available at summitdowntown.org, or I suggest calling your favorite restaurant or store and order over the phone. When you drive into town, our parking services agency has set aside designated parking spaces to facilitate curbside pickup of items ordered by customers. The designated spaces are marked with "curbside pickup only" signs. Gift cards are another way to support local businesses. Buy them now and use them later. Every little bit helps right now. Many of you have reached out to me for ways to help our friends and neighbors during this crisis. We are in close contact with Overlook Medical Center, and in fact, they need people to sew surgical masks and donate crocs for their medical personnel. Please go to the City of Summit website, cityofsummit.org/coronavirus, and find out ways to help. Sometime this month, you may have received a notice in the mail from the U.S. Census. While the deadlines to respond have been extended, you can respond now online by phone or mail. It is important in helping our municipality to get the funding we need for essential services, and I am still committed to achieving 100% participation from our community. On a lighter note, one of the activities I enjoy most about being mayor is being able to meet and spend time with children in our community, and reading books has been one of my favorites. Since social distancing prohibits that at this moment, I have recorded a series of 10 episodes of Storytime with Mayor Radus that is being shown on Hometown TV, HTV, weekdays at 10:00 a.m. Episodes are also available on the City of Summit YouTube page. I hope you and your family can view an episode when you have a moment. I thoroughly enjoyed recording them for you. Please continue to support one another from a distance. I am confident we will get through this. As Maya Angelou said, "Hope and fear cannot occupy the same space." Invite one to join you. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And now on to Michael Rogers, our city administrator, for his report. Michael?
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, great. To help mitigate workplace exposures to the COVID-19 virus, the city has closed all public facilities, including City Hall, transfer station, community center, athletic fields, and playgrounds until further notice. While City Hall building is closed to the public, staff is working on municipality. Please note that most offices are operated on a modified staff schedule. Nevertheless, you can reach them by email. A contact list for all city departments is listed on the city website at cityofsummit.org. Or call 908-277-9400 to reach a staff member. The library is also closed, and the app will no longer be in the building until further notice. The book trucks have been locked. Patrons are not able to return materials in the book drop. All materials will be due on maj. and no overdue fines will occur. Patrons are encouraged to use their library card to access the many electronic resources available. If a Summit resident would like to obtain a barcode to access electronic materials, please email office@summitlibrary.org, and a temporary library card will be issued. The Department of Community Services has established a temporary pickup and drop-off desk for residents, realtors, and contractors in the main lobby of City Hall outside the council chamber from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. daily for construction, engineering, and tree maintenance, donating certificates of occupancy, and other forms. Submissions of new planning board or zoning board adjustment applications, either in person or by mail, is suspended effective immediately until further notice. Any Federal Express, GPS, or USPS packages containing new applications will be returned. Curbside leaf pickup will begin on Monday 6 through Friday, April 24th, under regular household trash collection day. Place leaves and paper by all degradable bags. Do not rake or load leaves into piles in the street. And please do not include twigs, branches, or other yard grass in leaf bags. Deadline to file county tax board and state tax court appeals for corporate and residential property has been extended to May 1st, 2020, or 30 days following a determination by the government of the state of New Jersey to end the existing state of emergency. And lastly, applications being accepted for the unpaid summer internship program, and I'm optimistic it's still out, for college students through April 10th. Residents completing at least one year of college are eligible to participate. Unpaid internships take place over a four-week period of June. Please send your resume and cover letter to pressoffice@cityofsummit.org. And that's all I have for the seat, Council President. Thank you.
Thank you. And now on to my report. These are extraordinary times, and members of common council and I have been working closely with Mayor Radus and city staff to maintain essential city services and to protect public health. I would like to thank the staff for all that they're doing to keep the city operations going. The City of Summit has developed a webpage to share all COVID-19 information and updates at cityofsummit.org/coronavirus. It's updated daily and contains helpful links to local, regional, and state resources. Another way to stay informed is to go to the city's website and to sign up for notifications. You can elect to receive a text or email notification every time a website content is updated. Many children depend upon our schools to provide breakfast and lunch, and when schools are closed, this can be a problem for them. Summit Public Schools has taken a step further by not only providing meals to students who are eligible for free and reduced lunches, but they are now offering a grab-and-grow meals to all residents under the age of 18, regardless of the school they attend or their eligibility for the free and reduced meal program. There are two food pickup locations, at Summit High School and Jefferson School. They operate Monday through Friday from 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m., and they're available to any Summit resident under the age of 18. Summit is a wonderful and generous community, and I've received a number of inquiries from residents asking how they can help. If you or someone you know needs assistance with shopping or meals, or would like to volunteer to deliver groceries and prescriptions to Summit seniors, email smohelpingseniors@gmail.com, or call 908-605-0014. And this organization, Summit Marching Sun, has over 100 volunteers who are ready and waiting to help with these needs. And we thank them very much for doing this. Another new group is the Frontline Appreciation Group, or FLAG. It's been formed to provide meals to Overlook Medical Center, Emergency Department, and ICU staff. FLAG is accepting donations through the Police Athletic League PayPal account, and you should designate FLAG in the Special Instruction section. You can also find them on Facebook at FLAG of Summit. And they are providing these meals through local restaurants. So they're helping the restaurants in town stay in business, and they're also helping our emergency providers. In addition, Other Fellow First Foundation is raising money in support of the essential services and work provided by Sage Meals on Wheels, the Summit Volunteer First Aid Squad, and Summit's food assistance programs, including Grace, Ship, and Loaves and Fishes. The GoFundMe page is Keeping Unity in the Summit Community, You can also find these things on the city's website, in case you didn't catch that. These organizations are providing help for individuals and families in need, and would greatly benefit from your support. Union County is advising at-risk voters to use vote by mail to avoid unforeseen circumstances that could prevent voting in person on the June 2nd primary. You can download an application form at unioncountyvotes.com, or call 908-527-4996 to have an application mailed to you. There's also information on the city's website at cityofsummit.org. This is a challenging time in Summit and throughout the country. As is clear from the many programs that I just talked about, and many, many more that are in place in Summit and that keeps springing up every day, this community always rises to the occasion. I'm confident that we will help one another, and we'll come through this challenge stronger than ever. Thank you. And now I'd like to call on our chief of the OEM, the Office of Emergency Management Chief, Eric Evers, to fill us in on what's happening.
Thank you, just for the record, I'm one of the deputy OEM coordinators.
Oh, I apologize.
I'm also team firefighter.
Right.
Thank you. So I'd like to count having company and talk. I know neither trying time for anybody in Summit, all agency of the working tirelessly to be given front of pandemic. But the office of emergency management, we've been in close communication since this pandemic started in the city. We've been in close contact with the county OEM, state officials, and also local resources that we work hand-to-hand with other departments around the county. We work on all hazards approach, meaning that if we look at and prepare for any kind of natural man-made disaster, we plan for it, respond to mitigate it, and long-term we cover it. We do have a lot of plans.
Can you use another microphone? I guess that one's not plugged in.
Oh.
Eric, turn on the light. Maybe the light is off on the other side, this side.
No, it's not plugged in at all.
It's not plugged in?
It's not plugged in.
It's not plugged in?
Here, use this mic.
There you go.
Thank you. Should I start over?
Probably a good idea, yes?
All righty.
Probably a good idea to start over.
Okay, so Eric Evers, I'm the fire chief, also the deputy emergency manager, one of the deputy emergency coordinator coordinators. So this pandemic incident, something we usually deal with in Summit and other whole. So on the office of emergency management, we've been working closely with state officials, county officials, and also area of fire departments, police department, first aid squads, to share a lot of information. The office of emergency management works on all hazards approach, which means we prepare for any kind of natural man-made disasters. We do have a lot of plans in place that helps us stay a couple of steps in front of any kind of disaster that can hit the city of Summit. Been working on closely with Overlook Hospital. We've been working closely with the Regional Board of Health. We also working closely with police department and EMS to make sure we have all our information together to mitigating any problem that can come up in Summit. Overlook Hospital has tested needs, and Mary spoke about one of them. We also talked about any kind of long-term planning, hospital may need for any kind of testing sites, any kind of hospital beds, they feel they may need looking, looking long-term. Right now, the needs aren't there yet, but we do have plans in place. We have a lot of other plans, I could look further down the road, as this may escalate or de-escalate. We have plans in place to mitigate all those situations. So, but it's why we make decisions aware that we are prepared. We do this every day. Police, fire, EMS, we train constantly, we cross-train, and we're prepared for these kind of events. We have a lot of plans in place to kind of deal with these ads that come across. So we are prepared, we are looking to keep going. We're not, we're not meeting as a group. Usually when OEM activates, we come together in a room. We're not doing that because of the pandemic. We are doing a lot of conference calls, working remotely to keep all the communication pathways open. Right, so that's really all I have for that end. Any questions, I'll be happy to answer them. Any concerns at all?
Thank you, Chief.
All right.
Any questions for members of council? Councilwoman Hairston.
So Chief, I just want to begin by thanking you and the entire staff for your tireless efforts and really just making sure staff are well-prepared. And I also want to thank the volunteers. Mayor, I heard from someone in the ICU and wanted to especially say thank you for the supplies that were coming in and the crocs.
Good.
So it's working, and they want you to know that your efforts are really appreciated, and we want to keep you safe.
Great, thank you.
Councilwoman Naidu.
Thank you. I echo Councilwoman Hairston's thank you to you guys for all you guys have been doing in this very trying time. I have two questions. First is Atlantic Health Systems and Overlook and Union County opened a testing facility at King College.
Yes.
University, right? Do you know if there are plans on opening another site in Union County for testing?
I don't know any sites as of now. We do have a plan. We did put a preliminary plan together to have a testing site somewhere in Summit. Right now, that need has not come up yet for Overlook. But I don't have any, any sites of Union County other than King College right now.
And the second question is with regard to beds, right? So one of the big issues is that if you do have a surge in the need, patients, Overlook will have a certain need for beds. Is there anything that we can do to assist Overlook with regard to that issue? Or have you talked to them about how we can assist about that?
Yeah, so we're getting daily updates from Overlook Hospital every morning. We get a phone call from Overlook. They give us all the updated stats in the hospital. And we're also in close communication with any kind of long-term planning or short-term planning. That is one of them. Looking further down the road, we're looking if there is any, if the hospital gets overwhelmed. They do know that we do have resources we can give them on a local level and also on a county level. So we have that dialogue. Right now, there is no plan in place, I'm sorry, there is no need right now to do that, but we do have plans in place in case we could have that real with Overlook Hospital. Same thing with any kind of drive-through testing centers. So anything the hospital needs for the office of emergency management, we can deal with either locally or go out to the state and county to assist them. So, but yeah, we do have places, you know, we can, we can accommodate them if the needs arise. But right now, there is no need for that. We had a conference call yesterday with Overlook staff, and they're, they're pretty much holding it real where they're at right now. So if that changes, daily, weekly, we'll definitely revisit plans and adjust strategies accordingly.
I just got a comment that we need to be sure to speak up and into the microphones. And does anyone else on the dais, or below the dais, I guess, Councilmember Vartan?
Thank you, Council President. Thank you, Chief Evers, for you, all the first responders in Summit, and to all for which staying home is not an option. Can you just speak briefly to the, to the staffing changes that have been made in the police and fire departments and some of the changes in response as far as going inside or not is concerned? Thank you.
So I'll pick on the fire department perhaps. So the fire department, we have still open for business, obviously. We have not changed any of our calls we go on. We're still at full service, we're still delivering services to the summit. We are cutting back how many people, how many officers go into a building. So other than short of any kind of fire, any kind of life-threatening event, we're only sending one officer in a household. We're asking some preliminary questions, pre-screening questions for the public safety, also for our safety. So we are limiting people that are in the building. We are isolating our crews. Normally, every morning, two crews come together for a changeover. We have both crews isolated in quarters, so to minimize close contamination. The firehouse is closed, any kind of tours, the fire prevention, the visits, so act in public not to come to the firehouse. Any kind of drop-off is a lobby in front of the fire, you can leave stuff in the lobby. And if there's any kind of problem, you push the intercom button, we'll come out there and have a phone call and talk for your needs. As far as responses go, we're still maintaining our normal responses and not on that avenue. So I know the police department, I know, I'm not sure if they're going to speak up. I know Chief Wack had to do some modified schedule with her officers to minimize cross-contamination with her captain. I don't know if they're so, but.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Is there anyone on the line from the police department, either Chief Wack or Captain Bartalotti, who'd like to weigh in on, on anything else in response to that question?
I understand there are three individuals on the phone, but I don't know who they are.
Okay, so I guess the answer is no.
Okay, and just in closing, real quick, so just want to, just remind the public to, our city and office of emergency management coordinator, Ms. Amy Carins, she's posting constant updates on the city website. So any questions you have for the office of emergency management, police, or fire, go to the city website, go through all the guidelines from the Center for Youth Control and our Regional Board of Health. They're the two agencies we're taking all our guidelines from. So go on, go on site every day, look at those, constantly look for changes, and adhere to the distancing and all the other safety precautions in place on the website.
Mayor?
Yeah, may I just add one thing? I've received some emails from folks or phone calls, wondering if we've talked to Overlook. So I just want to reinforce that you're in touch with them every day. They, we have each other's cell phone numbers, the president of the hospital and the emergency management people. We met, we were on the phone with them yesterday, we were on the phone with them last week. We meet, we, they know that we will do anything we can to assist them. One of their issues is getting some kind of testing kit, more testing kits and things like that, which we unfortunately cannot provide. But we are there. Everything we can do, we will do, and we're in constant contact with Overlook. So I just want to reinforce what you've been saying.
Yes, yeah. And even besides many kind of event, we meet with Overlook Hospital every month at the safety committee. So we're constantly, even on great days where everything's good in the town, we're contributing with Overlook staff, talking about what their needs are, what our needs are, talking about these kind of events, what if, and I'm sure to go to the hospital, what would we do? What if there's a big mass casualty at Overlook Hospital, what would we do? So we're constantly role-playing all these scenarios, so the public can be pretty much aware that we are on top of this. We do train for it every day. We have a lot of exercises, a lot of tabletops that we practice these kind of events. So seeing Summit's in good hands with all the police, fire, EMS, and all the stakeholders. So we'll get through this, we always do, and we'll come out more knowledgeable than we had before this. We'll learn a lot from it, and we'll move on. And before we know this will be over, we'll be back to the business, so.
Thank you, Chief Evers.
Thank you very much. Any other questions?
Any other questions?
Great, okay.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
So on behalf of myself, Eric, on behalf of Chief Wack and Donald Nelson, according with the thank everybody for working with us and keeping the communication lines open as we move forward.
And thank you to all of you for, for taking such good care of Summit and all of Summit's residents.
Yep, thank you, yep.
We know we're in good hands.
That's what we're here for, so, great, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
So we're now on to the public comment portion of the meeting. So I'm going to turn now to our, to Madam Clerk, who is going to read the comments that we, or questions that we've received so far, and we will try to field what we can. I'm just realizing that I didn't ask our folks at home, if I didn't notice. Beth and Danny, did you have questions for the chief?
Oh, I did, thank you.
I forgot to look over there, I apologize. Okay, so we're going to move on to the public comment portion.
Okay, Council President, the first email received yesterday was from Claire Toth, a Summit resident. And she is asking, "How is the city coordinating with Overlook Hospital to plan for a potential need for excess hospital capacity?"
Chief Evers, would you like to come up and just give a little more detail, perhaps, on the excess hospital?
Okay, yes, like we said before, we are in contact with Overlook Hospital. The need has not arisen for extra beds. If that was the case, we would reach out to our county resources and also state resources through Overlook Hospital to find out what they would need bed-wise, and what areas of town can accommodate wherever the needs may be based upon their numbers. So we do have on, we do have shelters, we do have warming stations and shelters in town dedicated for any kind of disaster. So those would be our first go-to places if we needed to be. But it's basically going to be hinge upon what Overlook's needs are and amount of people, amount of beds they would need. And we will kind of take their guidance, but we do have place in town, we can accommodate them. That would be kind of a brilliant debt planning with everybody getting involved with that. So if that need came across, we would meet, we would talk to city staff, the mayor, to emergency management office, and we would develop a plan based upon Overlook's needs, and we would address that. But right now, there is no need right, right today. Looking down the road, it may be, and then we'll address that. But we do have place in town that we normally have for sheltering that could accommodate that kind of situation if it arises.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I think we're ready for our next question.
Next email came from Eileen Kelly, a Summit resident. She asks two questions. "Has the city assessed the 2019 revenue impact for COVID-19? Should parking fees be scarce and other facilities are shut down for a period longer than two weeks?" The second question, if yes, what timing scenarios have been reviewed, and what are the estimated financial impacts?
So on that issue, we will be talking about the parking. We have a resolution from the floor on parking, so we will be addressing it at that time. And so we can defer that one. But I did just realize that we forgot to have the city administrator talk about the budget. budget.
Well, public comment comes before.
The budget?
Yeah.
Oh, right, the budget is in the introduction, it's not a presentation. Okay, my apologies. So we're going to defer the question about parking to when we talk about the parking resolution a little bit later on in the meeting. So the next comment, please.
The next one is from Patty Staunton, a Summit resident. "I am grateful that we have the technology and the opportunity to continue our children's education and to work from home. My question regarding landscapers. For those who are continuing education online or working from home, the landscaper noise is an unexpected obstacle. Is there a way to determine what is essential landscaping during this time of emergency and resume regular landscaping when the stay-at-home order ends? One landscaper apparently has a couple of customers around my property and the noise has been off and on for four and a half hours. And yes, our windows are up, but since the lots are small, the noise is close, especially the gas-powered leaf blowers. Thank you and wishing you good health."
Thank you for that comment. I recognize that this is a challenge for all of us working in schooling at home, managing the noise and managing finding quiet places to work. The governor's office has weighed in and said that landscaping is indeed an essential service. So that is, I don't think we'll be able to address it under that route. Our Capital Projects Committee has been looking at landscaping issues. Those issues are probably a more long-term solution, but I will ask them to please take a look and see if there's anything that can be done in the short term while allowing landscapers to continue with the services that they provide. I'll open it up if anyone, if, I don't know, Director Casquez, are you on the phone? Guess not, okay. So I'll open it up if anyone else, Beth or David, if you have anything to add on that topic.
Beth, do you want to speak to it? I can speak to it, but I don't, because you're on the.
I'm happy to speak to it. As Council President said, this is considered an essential service, and if you think about how it would affect all the residents if their ponds and properties were overgrown and this wasn't taken care of, I think we can see why. We are all trying to deal with this new situation. I'm sure it hurts very much, being when it's loud, and you're trying to do other work patient with each other. We are options for battery-powered leaf blowers, and the city is piloting a program where the city workers are trying to battery-operate leaf blowers, but of course, that project is not going to be immediately implemented or affects the short-term problems that people are facing. And the Governor's Order 108, Executive Order 108, did prohibit municipalities from further restricting categories of essential personnel, so we do need to follow the governor's guidelines on this. So I don't think I've got anything else to add.
Thank you, Council.
My only, thank you, Council President. The only comment I would make is, obviously, as Councilwoman Little said, the governor's order, we can't go ahead and further restrict what he has deemed as being essential services. And if, since lawn services are considered essential, that is almost like the final word on what we can and cannot do under the present circumstances. We'll obviously look at this once the state of emergency ends, and we can, this is a broader question that's been brought up previously, but because of the situation that people are all facing currently, I think this is one of those instances where people have to talk to their neighbors and start, you know, just explaining where they are and how, trying to work each other. There's some things that government can do, and then there's some things that people just need to kind of try to talk through and work it out. And that's what I would suggest. It's not such a, it sounds like a horrible suggestion maybe that, you know, work it out amongst yourselves, but we all are in the same boat together. We're all trying to figure out ways of how to deal with the current situation. We all understand that, you know, we want to try to keep as many people employed as possible. There are people who have jobs associated with this that otherwise will have a hard time feeding their families if they don't have work. So we've got to kind of understand how we're balancing all of that. And that's what the governor has to do when he says, okay, certain things are open and certain things are not open. People can dispute whether or not that's essential, but it's also intended to make sure that people who are on the margins have jobs, so this way they can go to the grocery store and buy food. And we have to appreciate that. And so what I would say is, and this is probably not the only person who is having a difficulty with this issue, I'm sure there's many, many people who are having difficulty with hearing noises and so forth, is try to explain to your neighbors, hey, listen, you got that, you know, maybe you don't need to do it every week, maybe it's every other week or what have you. Just, let's try to get through this for the next couple of weeks slash months, and we will be, as the chief said, on the other end of it, and we can go back to somewhat normality.
Any other comments on this? Okay, so our next comment, please, Madam Clerk.
From Daniel Harrison, a Summit resident, also along the lines, let's see here. "First of all, a big thank you for all your efforts and leadership during this difficult time. I recognize and share the view that our top number-one priority right now is to do everything we can to support and help our community in keeping health sheltered and fed during the COVID-19 crisis and to contribute to as many local businesses as possible. On a related topic, I wanted to bring to your attention a key issue that has always been a concern, yet with coronavirus has been increasingly more urgent for families required to stay home for foreseeable future." He again goes into, if I may just summarize that.
Of course.
He's also concerned with the stay-at-home order and the noise generated by the leaf blowers and lawnmowers.
Okay, I believe that one's been answered. Thank you for your comment, and we've already answered that one. Okay, our next one, please.
The next one is from Diane Sotilly, a Summit resident. She writes a lengthy statement here, if I may. "City of Summit communication during COVID-19. I want to thank the Summit's Common Council and the mayor for your hard work during this unsettling time. In the early stages of the outbreak, I found it very helpful to watch Mayor Rades' panel with the Westfield Regional Health Center, Summit ENT, and others. I was also happy to get a call from Mayor Rades this morning to reiterate the importance of shelter at home. This is a trying time, but we all can do our part by staying home. I'm also so impressed by the volunteer groups that have formed. I'm going to be sewing face masks as part of an assembly line group organized by Lacy Rozowski. I encourage all Summit citizens to do their part in helping others, and I am confident that this town will do so. In watching the events unfold in our state, I have been thinking about the Summit, City Council, and Mayor Rades and how they can support our citizens. While the overall effort has been exceptional, I would like to make the following recommendations with regard to Council and Mayor communications to its residents." She speaks of COVID-19 alerts. During the week, she saw on Facebook a post from Council President Fox telling the citizens of the ability to sign up for COVID-19 alerts on the webpage. When she went to the site, it was not obvious where to sign up. She feels the process for signing up is complicated and there is no one alert that says COVID-19. She would like to see a specific alert for COVID-19 that is easily accessed. If that's not possible, would it be possible to post clear instructions that lets the citizens know exactly how to sign up and what alerts to sign up for as it relates to COVID-19? Do we want to answer after each?
That might be a good idea rather than try to.
Yeah, I can talk to Amy Caron tomorrow, because she's the one who says.
That's just what I was going to say.
And we'll just, we'll take care of that.
Yes, I don't think there is right now one that allows you to sign up specifically for COVID-19 alerts. I think it's a great idea, and I think that can be accomplished. So thank you for the suggestion.
Number two, telephone video communication from Mayor Rades. As I mentioned, I appreciated the call and panel discussion from Mayor Rades. I would like to see more of these communications. I was surprised that we did not get a call on Saturday notifying us of the governor's home order, stay-at-home order. While I understand that the city does not want to make unnecessary calls, this was a very important step for New Jersey, and I believe it was worthy of a call. I have also seen many mayors post videos that update their residents on a regular basis. As an example, my 97-year-old dad lives in Woodbridge, and I rely heavily on Mayor McCormick's video postings to keep me informed of the activities in his town. During this unsettling time, a mayor can be very helpful in providing urgent information as well as creating a sense of calm. I encourage more communication via calls and videos."
I would say that you're doing an excellent job, Mayor Rades.
I did a, I did a video today. I also did a robocall. The swift-reach alert calls are, you know, very, we've tried to be very careful over the years to only do them when there's an emergency, because it kind of becomes like white noise. If you do it too often, people don't pay attention. So I'm very careful about that. I did not send the call out on Saturday because I wanted to listen in to the governor's conference call for mayors, which was on Sunday at 3:00. Yesterday, I did a public service announcement on HTV, because, believe it or not, not everybody's on the internet, and we really need to reach folks that are looking, getting their information from the television. So I'll be sending another call out tomorrow about basically some of the things that we're talking about tonight. I don't know how much more I can do, I'm doing my best.
And you're doing an excellent job, Mayor.
Thank you.
Okay, so the rest, are there more questions?
There are.
Okay, continue.
Email communications. "On Saturday, I received an email from my ward councilperson, Council President Fox. The email was very informative. I was impressed with all the volunteer groups that have been formed in Summit, and I truly appreciate hearing about them. However, the link to the businesses that are open was not timely because it was not updated to include only the essential businesses that are permitted to be open during the stay-at-home order. I believe that the definition of essential businesses during the shelter at home is confusing in and of itself. I suggest that all email communications be timely and that the city continue to apprise its citizens of businesses that are considered essential and open."
Okay, I think I would, unless Mayor Rades has anything to say on this topic? Oh, yes.
Thank you, Council President. I would like to comment on that. As a chair of the Safety Committee, we meet and we are patched into calls with different governing bodies, and I'd like the caller, we appreciate her recommendations, but information is being fine-tuned and updated almost daily. And so timely is going to have to be a relative word at this time. And so we ask for the patience of our residents, and we are really working hard to make sure we're sifting out the misinformation and getting the right information to our mayor, and she is doing a great job of transmitting it and also giving you the sources where you can check on it yourself. So we appreciate that recommendation, and we are really trying to keep up with the changing information.
And I think Councilwoman Harriston has it exactly right. We're experiencing new developments almost hourly, and, you know, despite our efforts to keep the most current information out to you, sometimes things lag, you know, particularly over the weekends. But we will be, we're updating even on weekends, and I think I'm going to turn to Councilmember Naidoo and ask if we could ask SDI to update the list.
She's been updating it daily.
Okay, so it should be, if you, that list, the link to that list was on the city website, so if you look at it now, it should be updated with the correct information about essential businesses? Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. First of all, I was going to say this at the end of tonight's meeting, but I'll say it right now, which is in response to some of the suggestions, which obviously people are, it's very nice to have people think through these things and provide us feedback, which is what we want. Having said that, I was going to compliment both the mayor, the council president, and the other members of council, because on what is essentially something, there's no handbook on how to handle this. And the fact of the matter is, the president, the governor, all these people can do and give pronouncements about how things are going to happen. It's we at the local level and these folks trying, the city staff, trying to administer it. And what people have to realize is that there is tons of things that are going on that you are not seeing, that people are working behind the scenes. I'll give you one example. Councilwoman Little, who has been working tirelessly to make sure that the residents in the Vito Gallo Building are safe. Tirelessly, absolutely, right? But most of you are not going to know about that, because those are the types of things that are being done without necessarily having a meeting about it or having public, you know, notice about it or putting out a press release about it. And so what I would say, having sat in the council president's seat and having some appreciation of what she has to go through, some appreciation of what the mayor has to go through, the city administrator, and all of the departmental heads have to go through, is that everyone in this city has a responsibility to help everyone else along, okay? So if you know something and it's factual, not just rumors, but factual information that you think your neighbors can be helped with, share it. But you should not expect that these folks here who are volunteers and who are juggling multiple things, as the mayor said, she and the Office of Emergency Management are on conversations with Overlook Hospital. Some of those conversations are tough conversations that involve things that the public is not going to know about and think things are going smoothly because people have worked hours doing it. And so while I appreciate hearing these comments, I will remind the public, at least from my perspective sitting here and having sat for four years on council, having some appreciation of what these people are doing, this is tough stuff. There's no rulebook, there's nothing. These people are trying to figure things out. And so I say to the public, you have a responsibility in helping, running this city.
Shall we move on to the next portion of this? Is there more in this comment?
Yeah, there are two more comments. Outside gatherings, the City of Summit has done an excellent job of communicating the urgency of staying at home. The city has done much to close off fields and play areas. However, the Board of Ed Fields and Playgrounds remain open. I understand that this is a Board of Ed item, but while the residents who are concerned have the responsibility to contact the BOE, I'm hoping that the council can do all they can to convince the Board of Ed to take action.
I would say that that's something that residents can contact the Board of Education. If they see groups over 10 congregating, they can call the police non-emergency number, 908-273-0051, and an officer will go out and direct them to disperse. And I guess I will turn it over to the mayor for anything else she'd like to say.
So when did that email come in?
This email came in this evening at 4:30.
Okay, so when I spoke yesterday with the Assistant Superintendent Lou Pepe, he was directing the head of facilities to cordon, to take down the hoops on the basketball nets, like the nets, not the hoops, take down the nets, and to cordon off, as we did with snow fencing on the playgrounds.
Okay, thank you. I think we're ready for the next section.
The last one, volunteer opportunities. It would be helpful if the city website can have a list of all the wonderful organizations that have formed to assist our residents and healthcare professionals.
I believe that a lot of that material is on there. Whatever isn't, we will pass along to our communications chief and ask her to add that to the website. Thank you for that recommendation. Okay, we're on to the next email. All righty.
And this would be the last one.
Okay.
From Natalie Bergman, no address provided. "Since the dump is not open and gardening is something that we can all do, what should we do with the garden refuse that is not leaves? I know the leaf pickup will begin on April 6th, but I have other garden refuse that is too heavy for paper bags. Can refuse be put in garbage cans, and could curbside leaf collection start now instead of April 6th?"
City Administrator, could you please address that one?
What we're trying to advise people is to just store it in an area that is not conspicuous for the time being. This is not going to be a permanent, long-term thing, as we hope. We are, I'm in discussions with our Department Director, Casquez, trying to see how to potentially operate in a good fashion down at the transfer station, but I must stress to the public that we, our first and first priority to the transfer station is to our employees, and we need to protect them as well as the others that we're trying to encourage staying home. So it is a short-term defeat, and we're just asking for the patients to store it and debris on their property and anything that's placed. We will get to it. We will get to it. You can certainly make a call to the Department of Community Services if there is a possibility that something can be arranged, but for the time being, we're just asking people to be patient. The transfer station is a great amenity for our community and we are fortunate that we're one of three communities in City that has this. But right now, we must protect our employees and we must protect our public at large and we're encouraging people to just stay home. If they need to get out of their house, go take a walk, ride their bike, but let's, let's try to, we've been getting a lot of emails, I know the elected officials have been getting a lot of emails about municipal transfer station. We hope in the coming weeks, we can start to go to a modified schedule and if we can figure out and make sure that everybody's safe and protected down at that location. But for the time being, it is closed and we'll read that.
Thank you. Are there any other comments that have come in?
No other comments.
Okay, so we are now going to close the public comment period. Yes, come on up, Chief Evers.
I just got reminded when I sat down. There is one need that we're looking for is N95 masks, the dust mask. I know they're at very high demand, but we have been distributing some to them, to people that have been coming in. The Board of Ed donated some and other agencies. If anybody has any masks that they want to donate, drop them with the fire department and we'll make sure that we get them to all the hospitals or any other emergency services in Summit who need those masks to operate in. So that's one need that we're looking to get from, if there's anybody stores in town that have, want to donate them, we'll bring them over. We could definitely use them.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Okay, so now we're on to ordinances for hearing. And we have, Madam Clerk, could you read our first ordinance?
Ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank.
Okay, Councilmember Vartan.
Thank you, Council President. As discussed when introduced at our last council meeting, this ordinance establishes a cap bank for the municipal budget. We are about to introduce a very lean 2020 municipal budget. This is extremely impressive work. The cap is a contingency tool to allow an increase over the cap bank if necessary. Having this option available will allow the city to be prepared and I move to open the hearing for this ordinance.
Second.
Are there any comments from members of council? Madam Clerk, do we have any comments from members of the public on this topic?
No comments, Councilwoman.
Okay. Any other comments from members of council? Okay, hearing none. Could we have a roll call vote, please? Oh, wait, no, we're the.
No, we're closing the.
Closing the hearing, yes. Okay, so hearing is closed. So now we're moving on to ordinance for final consideration.
If I may read it.
Oh, absolutely.
The title, yes. An ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and to establish a cap bank.
Council Pres, uh, Councilmember Vartan.
Thank you, Council President. This ordinance is, this ordinance establishes the cap bank for the municipal budget. As the hearing has just concluded, I move this ordinance for final consideration.
Second.
So now we're ready for the roll call.
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Ms. Hairston.
Aye.
Ms. Little.
Aye.
Mr. Naidu.
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan.
Aye.
Mr. Vartan.
Aye.
President Fox.
Aye. Okay, motion carries and then we're on to ordinances for introduction. So, Madam Clerk, are we going to read it first or?
I believe that our attorney.
Yes.
Yes, read.
I would suggest that you just read it, the title, and then you guys can do the motion to carry it.
Okay.
Read each one, the roll call motion to carry it, it'll be republished at a future date and introduced at a future date.
Read it and then a motion to.
A motion to table it.
To a future meeting.
Yeah, or table it and then it'll be reintroduced at a future date.
Okay, thank you.
All right, then I will.
Go ahead.
And we want to explain that you're doing this because we're only conducting essential business during this pandemic and so these are items that we believe we can do at a future date where people will have public comment on them.
Correct. Okay.
The first ordinance is an ordinance amending the code, Chapter 7, Traffic, Section 7-11.2, Stop Intersections Designated.
So as, as our city attorney has just referred to, we are going to table this introduction because we are only doing essential business at this meeting and we are not, we'd like to do this at a time when we're able to have more fulsome public comments. So do I have a motion to table this ordinance?
So moved.
Mr. Vartan.
Okay, so now we need a roll call vote on that, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Ms. Hairston.
Aye.
Ms. Little.
Aye.
Mr. Naidu.
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan.
Aye.
Mr. Vartan.
Aye.
President Fox.
Aye. Okay, the motion carries. So we will, at a later date, set that ordinance for introduction, the time for that. So we're moving on to the second of the safety and health introduction.
An ordinance amending Chapter 7, Traffic, Section 7-8, Parking, Subsection 7-8.5, Parking Time Limited on Certain Streets, and Subsection 7-8.7, Parking Prohibited at All Times on Certain Streets of the Code of the City of Summit.
Do I have a motion to table this ordinance for introduction at a future date?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Ms. Hairston.
Aye.
Ms. Little.
Aye.
Mr. Naidu.
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan.
Aye.
Mr. Vartan.
Aye.
President Naidu.
Fox, but I.
Oh, I'm sorry, President Fox. Sorry, I apologize.
That's okay. That's a first.
It was just something.
This whole thing is. Is a first.
It's just crazy.
Yes, unprecedented. Okay, so we're now moving on to resolutions. So we have a bunch of resolutions from finance. Councilmember Vartan, would you like to start?
Sure. Thank you, Council President. Do we want to give Administrator Rogers the opportunity to give us a brief summary of the budget?
Thank you, thank you, Councilmember Vartan. I don't know how brief it would be, but I'll try my best to get through it. I'll start by saying that this is the first time I've ever presented the municipal budget via video conferencing, so I hope it's as effective as being here. So I'm just going to make some general comments about the budget and then I'll get into specifics about the general fund budget and utilities and I'll try to just take you through as quickly as I can. So the City's municipal budget is a financial plan to fund our services and obligations in the coming year. In fact, we go into any year budget planning by always being mindful of some level of uncertainty underlying it. Unfortunately, at the moment, uncertainty pervades every aspect of economic and societal life as we knew it weeks ago. Prior to the COVID-19 pandemic declaration and subsequent actions taken by all levels of government, I was certainly more optimistic about the conservative planning methods we applied to projecting 2020 budget revenues and appropriations. While we may not meet some anticipated revenue projections in this budget, not unlike any other budget year, let me assure you, assure the public, that we will make decisions on expenditures that we cannot control throughout the rest of this year to offset that revenue cost. We will make every effort to minimize any financial impact we may face for outcomes beyond our control. At this moment, I believe the municipal budget reflects the financial resources needed to maintain the highest level of service our community expects and deserves and responsibly meets the city's other financial obligations. Even though the 2020 municipal budget is crafted with a combination of conservative revenue estimates and a 0.6% increase in municipal service operation costs, it will require a slight municipal tax rate decrease this year to balance the city's budget. Fortunately, as we have done for many years, Summit's 2020 municipal tax rate decrease will be under 1 cent or a 0.75% increase over last year's rate. Let me take the opportunity to express this one point. Summit City Organization's financial condition is very strong. Given that fact, we will get through this very difficult and uncertain time in our history. I expect hard fiscal challenges ahead. However, the strength of our city will help us withstand the health crisis and economic turmoil we are in the midst of and the negative impacts it has certainly had on this community, the state of New Jersey, and the entirety of its population. So I'll just go over some Summit budget summary points. So at this time, this presentation is, is up on the web, the city website. Probably, and I'm not 100% certain, I believe, other, the other budget documents that I do prepare and unfortunately cannot provide you this evening as I usually do to the common council mayor, I have books that are copies that I will give to you as soon as possible, but that document will be on the website and may be up there for the public to view. I will not be going through this presentation slide by slide tonight. In the interest of time, I will only go over the most salient points of the budget document. Overall, the total municipal operating budget is $52,056,610, which is a 0.1% increase over the 2019 budget. The 2020 capital budget related to the general fund is $4.18 million and that's a 75.3% decrease. Of this $4.18 million, $3.34 million is for city infrastructure, equipment, and facility maintenance. The primary, primary reason for that decline is the $11.00 million that was approved from last year's capital budget for the new fire headquarters. Excluding that project, the 2020 budget is nearly $1 million lower than last year. In fact, this capital budget is the lowest it's been in over a decade. On the revenue side of the general fund, municipal levy needs are up over $476,000 to balance our budget. Fortunately, our city tax base grew by nearly $30 million in 2019 and will provide for about $1.3 million in new tax revenues this year. Specifically, the municipal tax revenue increase will be slightly over $254,000. The new municipal tax revenue, this municipal tax revenue offsets the $476,000 tax revenue needs and as a result, reduces the municipal tax rate increase. For point of understanding, one cent of a municipal tax rate is equal to $317,295. As I stated before, the municipal tax rate will increase by under 1 cent or 0.75%. And I'm happy to state that our municipal tax levy amount is $1,418,850, under the maximum tax levy amount allowed for under the tax level 2% capital. Local revenues are projected to decline by just under $100,000. Some line item in the budget will be impacted on what's going on right now in economy, but the uncertainty is too great at this moment to deviate from this existing plan. One example of such revenue uncertainty is the family aquatic center fees. It's, it's many months out as to how this is going to play out and so it's certainly a question in our minds about how this is going to play out, but we're going with the revenue that we have in the budget. You know, I have a certain degree of confidence that it will be there. Enterprise contribution revenues are more stable, but are anticipated to be down by almost $150,000. And that's the main reason of just not bringing in over the amount of monies that we did in 2019 from the parking and sewer utilities. Prior tax receipts will be lower by about $110,000. That's not necessarily a bad thing, given it indicates the strength of tax collection we had in 2019. The city collected 99.62% of taxes billed last year. Outstanding tax obligations from last year are just over $524,000 and therefore we are anticipating $520,000 in 2020. I'll move on to appropriations. Total budget appropriations will see a 0.1% increase, as mentioned before, and this amounts to $71,811 more than 2019 adopted in budget appropriations. Municipal operation costs, which comprise the department salary ranges, insurance, pension, and social security, are projected to rise by nearly $189,000 or 0.6%. Total salary ranges in the general fund, which excludes the utilities and the form of construction provision, makes up about 33.7% of total appropriations, is down about $56,000 from last year. Even when you include parking services and sewer utilities, which are funded by user fees, and the UCC division, which is funded by trust, all which are outside the municipal budget, it is only $43 higher than 2019, which is essentially flat. Total personnel now raises, that is permanent full-time and part-time employees, are the same as last year, a total of 198. In municipal departments, the two largest increases, public safety, which, which makes up its police and fire, is budgeted to be $210,657 higher. And in community services, that community services is $148,000, sorry, $970 higher than last year. Police and the Department of Community Services have the three largest other expense line items. And what I mean by that is when you look at the budget, you have salary ranges and then the other expense, what we call other expenses, the general categories has all the line items within the respective budgets. Other expenses for all departments total about $10.81 million and that's 28.78% of total appropriations. And the three largest other expense items I just mentioned, transfer station disposal, which is going to be $1,070,000 this year, we're seeing a $195,000 increase. Police other expenses total $448,000, that's up $21,000. And then recycling curbside collection will be up, which is a total of $370,750. We're going to see a $118,000 increase. And that the transfer station disposal number and the recycling curbside collection amounts to $313,000. And the increases this year are mainly due to contractual increases that we're going to see and experience this year. In other appropriations, healthcare insurance, medical and dental premiums, that number is $3.68 million in gross amount. In the general fund budget, line item will see $2.41 million and that's because $1.12 million is contributed by employees to offset that number and $150,000 is allocated in parking sewer receiving budgets that come back into the general fund to offset that $3.68 million. Pension obligations is $3.82 million and that's up $8,208, which is very good compared to remote motion. Debt service, $4.66 million. This is the larger, but largest budget increase this year and that's, we'll see it up $660,348. Capital improvements Fund, this line item is down by $625,800. Last year, approximately $590,000 was budgeted for a 5% down payment on the new Firefell 災災災 project, which was a one-time expenditure. Reserve for uncollected tax, $5.3 million, a little over 10% of total appropriations. That's slightly up this year. This is the line item that will be budget money in anticipation of taxes billed but unpaid. This $5.3 million is a result of an anticipated, anticipated collection rate of 96.2%. Just as I stated earlier, we typically collect over 99% even, even going back to the start of the last decade when we were in the middle of the severe economic downturn and experiencing a terrible real estate market, tax collection is about 97%. Last point about the appropriations cap, the city will be $3.14 million under the maximum appropriations cap amount allowed under state law. So I'm just going to go on to just make some comments about the parking services budget and just allow me to briefly touch on it. The parking services operating budget is $3.98 million and that's a 0.68% increase over last year. As you know, the parking service budget is funded by user fees, not municipal taxes. Given the council will consider an act on restitution to temporarily suspend collection of all parking fees through April, we do expect significant revenue loss that is not reflected in the parking service budget at this time. However, there are agency operational costs that will not, we will not incur because of user inactive. That will certainly offset some of this revenue loss along with other discretionary appropriations we will decide not to extend this year. The parking service capital budget is $50,000, which is $50,000 lower than last year. This is mainly for parking infrastructure maintenance projects. Sewer utility budget, I'm just going to finish up with the budget summary for this. The sewer utility operating budget is $4.38 million. The sewer utility operating budget is $4.3 million, a 1.75% increase. Capital budget amounts in the sewer utility is $710,000, about $300,000 higher than 2019. Sewer projects included is requests for sewer infrastructure, equipment, and pump stations. I go into much greater detail on the budget report that will be posted on the website. I will receive soon enough a partial copy, and that's all I have right now, and I'm going to end any comments or questions from the council.
Are there any questions from members of council? So, yes, council member Naidu.
And I think this is, thank you, council president. I think, thank you, Michael, for doing an excellent presentation. Obviously, one of the questions in the general comment section was about, you know, the uncertainty, as you expressed, that none of us could predict. I want to just focus on another aspect of that, and that is the stimulus bill that is currently going through Congress. And my hearing on the television is that one portion of that stimulus bill is about $150 billion to states to help with states and the expenditures that they and municipalities may incur. And so I think unless, I'm wrong, unless obviously more uncertainties, what have you, go on, that there is the possibility, isn't there, Michael, that there is revenue that will come in from the state that's unexpected to offset some of the expenses and so forth, uncertainties that we've had on our side of the ledger?
I hope so, Galtman. It's really hard to track without reading any of the federal bills that are being entertained at this point and what's going to be allocated to the states. I expect New Jersey, given the impact of COVID on our state, there will be monies that come in. I mean, at this point, what's vital is that our small businesses in the downtown area and other areas are provided a lifeline to get them through these next few months. So I'm optimistic about that, and that certainly will preserve the financial relationship with landlords, and we can, you know, go on and on about the domino effect of that. So I think there's billions of dollars that I'm hearing will come from DC to help in that area, and I do hope that some of this is to help certainly local governments that are not so much in expenditure area at this point as far as assistance, although we will qualify for any federal emergency that is provided by FEMA that we qualify for. But it is also to potentially offset the losses because of this economic activity that we're not seeing in our communities. And I'm thinking specifically about just even parking issues, revenue losses in that respect, because nobody is out there and nobody's been quite frankly really allowed to get out there. So it's, I hope this is what they're thinking about. I remain cautiously optimistic, as most people, you never know what's going to happen, but I think that, you know, there is some sense that they're going to act a little differently this time than they did 11, 12 years ago during that, during the greatest decade.
Thank you, Michael.
Are there any other questions for our city administrator? Thank you, Michael, for the excellent presentation, and I guess I'll turn it back to you, council member Vartan.
Thank you, council president, and many thanks, Michael, for the summary. So this resolution, number 7069, does three things. First, it introduces the municipal budget. Second, it introduces the budgets for the sewer and parking utilities. And third, it establishes the date when the hearing for these budgets will take place. Before getting into the details, I first want to take the opportunity to thank Administrator Michael Rogers, CFO, Tammy Baldwin, and all the department heads for working diligently to produce this very impressive budget. So as Administrator Rogers mentioned, the municipal operating budget is $52,056,610 and represents a 0.75% increase in municipal taxes over last year. It is also important to note that staffing levels are flat. The total capital budget, including utilities, is $4,949,500. And in an effort to simultaneously continue funding important infrastructure and equipment purchases and control our debt, as Administrator Rogers mentioned, it is the lowest capital budget in more than a decade. The hearing for this budget will take place at the council meeting on Tuesday, April 28th. Between now and then, the entire budget and budget presentation will be posted on the city website. The budget snapshot will be mailed to all homes, as is customary. We're also exploring other options to educate the public about the budget. Obviously, as has been mentioned multiple times, there is great uncertainty about the potential budget impacts of the pandemic. However, we will assess each financial decision with the same level of responsibility with which the budget was crafted. I move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
All right, so roll call vote, Madam Clerk, please.
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Ms. Hairston.
Aye.
Ms. Little.
Aye.
Mr. Naidu.
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan.
Aye.
Mr. Vartan.
Aye.
President Fox.
Aye.
The motion carries. So Resolution Finance Number Two, please.
Thank you, council president. Resolution number 7053 introduces the special improvement district budget and establishes the hearing date. The total for this budget is $385,478, which is a 1% increase over last year, and the hearing will also be at the council meeting on Tuesday, April 28th. I move to adopt this resolution.
A second.
Roll call, please, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Ms. Hairston.
Aye.
Ms. Little.
Aye.
Mr. Naidu.
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan.
Aye.
Mr. Vartan.
Aye.
President Fox.
Aye.
The motion carries, and we're on to Finance Number Three, Councilmember Vartan.
Thank you, council presidents. Resolution number 7070 authorizes the transfer of funds within the operating budget from an account with a balance to an account with insufficient funds. The total amount of this transfer is $7,500. This is a regular occurrence until the 2020 municipal operating budget is approved. I move to adopt this resolution.
A second.
Roll call vote, please, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Ms. Hairston.
Aye.
Ms. Little.
Aye.
Mr. Naidu.
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan.
Aye.
Mr. Vartan.
Aye.
President Fox.
Aye.
That was one we could have done comments on, correct, Madam Clerk?
I'm sorry?
Was that one we should have done comments on before voting? Just realized. The other ones, no, because it's authorized.
Open it to comments, please?
Yeah, yeah, okay. All right, so Resolution Number Four, Councilmember Vartan.
Thank you, council president. Resolution number 7071 authorizes emergency temporary appropriations to the current temporary municipal operating budget. This resolution adds $1,251,300 to the current temporary municipal operating budget. Budget rules are super interesting. The word "emergency" sounds concerning. In this case, it's not, and it has nothing to do with the pandemic. The temporary operating budget can only be 26% of the total operating budget. This emergency appropriation is done every year to add more money to the temporary operating budget to pay bills for the additional month until the municipal operating budget is approved. I move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Are there any comments from members of council?
This is just a standard operating thing, you know, in shorter words than what council, you know, it's just standard operation.
Right, right, as he said, not an emergency, a COVID emergency.
Not a real.
It's just a term of art.
Just the terminology we have to use.
Yes, okay. Any other comments from members of council? Okay, hearing none, let's, and there were none from the public on this topic? Okay, all those in favor, oh, roll call, yes, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Ms. Hairston.
Aye.
Ms. Little.
Aye.
Mr. Naidu.
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan.
Aye.
Mr. Vartan.
Aye.
President Fox.
Aye.
The motion carries. Finance Number Five, Councilmember Vartan, please.
Thank you, council president. Resolution 7085 authorizes emergency temporary appropriations to the sewer utility. The total amount of this appropriation is $5,193.63, and it is being done for the same reason as the last resolution. I move to adopt this resolution.
Second.
Any comments from members of council? Any comments from the public? Madam Clerk.
Mr. Bowman.
Aye.
Ms. Hairston.
Aye.
Ms. Little. Ms. Little?
I think she's frozen. What do we do? Oh, she's back.
Aye.
Hi. Mr. Naidu.
Aye.
Mr. O'Sullivan.
Aye.
Mr. Vartan.
Aye.
President Fox.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, so now we're on to capital projects and community services. Councilmember Little, Number One, please.
Thank you. Capital Projects Resolution Number One is number 7020, and this resolution is to set the 2020 super usage charges for operating and maintaining our sewer super system. These are determined in part by the fees set by the meeting and in part from the city's sewer operating budget. There's a slight increase of $18 per household, which reflects some increased costs in the operating budget and capital budget from sewer, as Michael Rogers just explained, they're both up slightly. This resolution also sets the fees that are collected from the Providence residents under a long-term agreement between Summit and Providence to share the service sewer charges. Under this resolution, you'll see that New Providence residents are charged a slightly lower rate than Summit residents, and this is because New Providence only uses a small portion of the overall sewer network, so they aren't assessed as much of the overall operating capital spending. I ask that we approve this resolution for the sewers.
Second.
Are there any comments from members of council? I would just note that as far as the sewer fees, that we have amongst the lowest sewer fees in the area, and this is something where this money is used for maintenance, this is exactly what you want, is maintenance on sewers, because when they're not properly maintained, that's when you know about them. So that's, with that, do we have any comments from members of the public on this?
No comments.
Oh, okay. If nothing else, then let's go ahead and vote, all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries. Capital Projects, Number Two, Councilmember Little.
Thank you, council president. Capital Projects, Number Two, is number 7073, and this is to authorize the execution of a deed. Resolution authorizes an affordable deed restriction on a three-bedroom apartment at the 123 Summit Avenue property, which will be designated as a moderate income unit. You'll probably remember that at a recent council meeting, we approved two other deed restrictions for two other apartments in the same property, a one-bedroom and a two-bedroom, which were both restricted for low-income housing. I move that they approve this resolution.
Second.
Are there any comments from members of council? Any comments from the public, Madam Clerk?
No comment.
Okay, so with that, I will ask for a vote, all those in favor.
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Capital Projects, Number Three, Councilmember Little.
Thank you, council president. Capital Projects, Number Three, is number 7072. This is another authorization for execution of an affordable housing deed restriction. This one is for 412 Morris Avenue, which is a two-bedroom, low-income housing unit. Under the terms of this agreement, there will also be a $110,000 payment to the Affordable Housing Trust fund by the developer. This designation fulfills the obligation for the development being built on New England Avenue, adjacent to the Price Church. At another council meeting, we did approve this off-site obligation, which we usually don't do, but we did in this case because the onsite location of an affordable housing unit was difficult due to ADA compliance. So we did agree to an off-site designation for this particular property, and I do move this resolution for further.
Second.
Any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public, Madam Clerk?
No comments received.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. So we're now on to Capital Projects, Number Four, Councilwoman Little.
Thank you, council president. Capital Projects, Number Four, is number 7045, and this is to award the bid for curbside collection marketing of recycling materials for the period of July 1st, 2022 to June 30th, 2022. This resolution awards the curbside recycling collection contract to Basso rubbish removal for this period of two years. This contract is being awarded despite it being a 123% increase from the previous contract and imposing increased restrictions on material that can be collected. Similarly to the transfer station, this contract will allow the collection of only one, two, and five plastics. As we've been discussing in many council meetings recently, this increase and this change in the recycling contract is due to the complete change in landscape for recycling. The markets for recycling in China and India have almost dried up. There is very difficult, there's a difficult market for these materials at this point, and the entire landscape is changing dramatically, not only here in Summit but across the country. You should, as residents, you should watch for much more and frequent messaging on the recycling changes that will be coming both from the city, the Recycling Advisory Board, and the Environmental Commission. All of us are going to need to work together to improve the recycling and to change our habits and to focus more on reducing and reusing in addition to recycling. I know I've said it at several council meetings, I'm probably sounding like a broken record, but that is the reality of the situation facing us here in the city and across the country. So I ask that we approve this resolution for this recycling contract.
Second.
Any comments from members of council?
Council president.
Oh, yes.
I would like to just echo what Councilwoman Little said. You know, right now, when we're dealing with this pandemic, there'll be things that we're doing that, you know, as far as issues dealing with plastics and so forth, that we'll have to push off just because of the nature of the situation we're currently in. Having said that, the issues that existed three or four weeks ago will continue to exist with us three or four months down the road from where we are now, when we, hopefully this pandemic issue will be behind us or at least under control somewhat. And we're still going to have to deal with those issues and address them, and one of them is to try to figure out ways of reducing plastic, because otherwise, this is just going to be a larger and larger number of tax dollars that we're going to end up spending, that is just going to eat up something that's just literally throwing money away, literally. So it's something that, you know, yes, we're going to have to take a little hiatus from in thinking and how do we address it and so forth, but we have to think in the long term as well as in the short term.
Any other comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public?
No comments.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries, and we're on to Capital Projects, Number Five, Councilmember Little.
Thank you, council president. Capital Projects, Number Five, Resolution Number Five is number 7084, and this is to authorize assignment of the onsite vegetated waste grinding services contract and to amend the amount of the award. This resolution just changes the assignment on our current vegetated waste contract and increases the overall contract award amount. In November of 2018, the council awarded this contract to Jersey Mulch. Jersey Mulch has since been acquired by a company called Nature's Choice Corporation, which is a company that the city has worked with before and has a very good relationship with. So we are mending the contract to assign it to Nature's Choice. The amount of the existing contract ceiling is being increased because last year, under this contract, we went right up to the ceiling, and the Department of Community Services anticipates that if we have any other large storms, that we might need to go over the amount, so they've increased it slightly to $65,000 as a ceiling. And I would ask that we approve this resolution.
Second.
Are there any comments from members of council? I had a question, Councilmember Little. This is to create, to grind trees and branches to make mulch, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that. Any other questions? Okay, any?
No, no members.
No members, okay. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Moving on, we're up to the last capital projects resolution. Councilmember Little.
Thank you, Council President. The final capital project resolution is number 7089, and this is to support year three and authorize additional banner locations for the Hometown Heroes program. There's been tremendous support from this program from the community and from the city, and we enthusiastically support this ongoing program for year three. We are also happy to report the Bayou receives more applications for the banners, and thus we are adding an additional location, which will include Morris Avenue between Kent Place Boulevard and Broad Street. In addition, we are extending the period that the banners will be displayed from Memorial Day, the originally, in the past two years, they've been displayed from Memorial Day through July 4th. We are extending that until August 15th, which I believe is also the date of BJ Day, so that's a significant date, and it's a compromise to satisfy the public's desire to have the banners up longer and be displayed for a longer period of time, but also the lighting of the banners. So we are asking that we approve this resolution.
Second.
Are there any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public on this topic?
None.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, moving on. We have two resolutions from Law and Labor. Councilmember Bowman.
Thank you, Council President. Resolution number 7067 is to extend intermittent sick leave with pay for the DPW employee. As we discussed in closed session, we hope this employee a recovery. So I move this resolution.
I second it.
Are there any comments from members of council? Any comments from members of the public, Madam Clerk?
None.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Law and Labor Number Two, please.
Number Two is Resolution Number 7092, is to extend sick leave with pay for a DCS employee, and that's, as we discussed in closed session, this would be through April 24th. He's recovering from a surgery, so, or they are recovering from a surgery. I move this resolution.
I second it.
Any comments from members of council? Okay. All those in?
None from the public.
None from the public. Yes. Okay. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now, moving on, we have one resolution from the floor from Community Programs and Parking Services. Councilmember O'Sullivan.
Thank you, Council President. Yes, we have a resolution from the floor to authorize temporary parking rules from March 24th all the way through April 28th. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Sorry. All the way through April 28th. In an effort to assist the community and to support our local businesses during these difficult times, the Council, Community Programs and Parking Services Committee is recommending that council consider the following actions. That we would waive daily parking fees and permits that are required at any public street-metered location and any municipal-owned or operated parking facility. That the time limits that will be in effect and enforced for the 15-minute, 30-minute, 90-minute, and two-hour areas located in the CRVD, which includes street parking spaces and the spaces in the bank street lot on the ground level of the tier garage. So the parking will be waived, but those time limits will be enforced, so that if you're there for more than 15 minutes at a 15-minute spot, there will be a chance that you can get a ticket. The council, there will be a high degree of compassion that will go out to the public, advising everyone of all of these changes and the need for heavy turnover, because we need heavy turnover of these street spaces within the CRVD. The city has designated numerous temporary curbside-only pickup spaces to assist downtown establishments offering hiccups to have available parking during this crisis. So we need people to keep moving in the downtown so that our local businesses that are offering takeout services can have heavy turnover of their spots so that they can have a lot of business ongoing. Just a reminder that the forest lot gates are up, and so if you need to park longer, that's where you should be going, so that we can have Springfield Avenue spots and those curbside pickup spots constantly moving. One other thing I wanted to mention, we want to deal with this on a month-by-month basis so that we can do our part to alleviate the hardship our residents are facing and to facilitate business activity in summer. So if people are running out to do their dry cleaning, or they want to go to the bank, or they need to go to the pharmacy, or they just want to pick up dinner for their family or a cup of coffee, we don't want them to come back and find a ticket on their way. While there will be a significant hit to parking services revenue upwards of $300,000, we have to realize that these lots and our Broad Street West Garage, Broad Street Garage, and our streets are empty anyway. People are doing what our governor has asked us to do, and that is to stay home. Ridership on New Jersey Transit is down upwards of 90%. People are making drastic changes to their lives for the greater good, and we're doing the same. The impacts of COVID-19 are changing every day, but this is one way we can help our businesses and community at large, and I move that we adopt this resolution.
A second.
Are there any questions from members of council? I think that was very nicely stated, Councilmember O'Sullivan. The purpose of this is to make it possible for our downtown businesses and our residents to still keep our downtown thriving, and, you know, we are not looking to ticket. We want to just make sure that people don't take advantage and use the curbside spots for anything other than using curbside businesses. I did have one question for you. We've received some questions about parking on the streets, you know, the two-hour and three-hour parking on some of the more residential streets, usually near schools and places like that. Is there going to be any change to those restrictions? No.
Is that, I thought you said that was for Rita.
If Rita's on, that would be great. Is Rita on?
That's, my understanding is that's not being enforced right now. Raw schools are out. There are people on Euclid that park there all day, and they work from home. So all those folks need to do is to call the office and give their plate number, and they will not be ticketed. But right now, all over town, enforcement is nonexistent. We are there to make sure that people are being safe and parking legally, but that we are not looking for people to feed the meter or use the kiosks because of the, you know, everybody's a little worried about touching surfaces and things like that, so we don't want people touching the kiosks or feeling the meat to go near them. But, but there will be enforcement on getting people moving and keeping cars circulating.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember O'Sullivan. Any other comments or questions from members of council? Do we have any public comments on that?
None from the public.
Okay. All right. So then, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. That closes the resolutions portion of the meeting. We're now on to council members' comments or new business.
Consent agenda.
Consent agenda first.
Consent agenda, correct. Okay. Yes. It's really weird. Okay. So usually, we take all the resolutions and vote upon them as a whole. I understand we have one item on the consent agenda that's going to be pulled. Councilmember Vartan?
Yes. Thank you, Council President. That's correct. Number 7064, under Finance, authorizing attendance at the Tax Collectors and Treasurers Association of New Jersey Conference is going to be pulled because the conference has been canceled.
Okay. Thank you. So aside from that, from Finance Number One, all those in favor of the, oh, I need a motion. I need a motion on the consent agenda.
So moved.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. And now we're moving on to council members' comments and new business. Councilmember Hairston.
Thank you, Council President Fox. I just want to express sincere gratitude to our city clerk for all of the effort that went into making these arrangements for us to be safe, and I know this was not easy to make sure all of our technology, and so I just really want to thank you for doing that and looking out for us.
I second that. It's been a daily change in plans, so we appreciate the work you've done. Councilmember Vartan.
Thank you, Council President. Just wanted to let people know that the Board of School Estimate met on March 5th and heard the Board of Education's budget presentation. I'm extremely pleased that they, too, have come in below the cap. The Board of School Estimate will meet again next Monday, March 30th. There will be a vote on the final approval of the budget during that time. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from members of council or mayor?
I say what I wanted to say in the beginning, so. I'm just very grateful for all the work that all the city employees are putting in. Everybody is being calm, patient, a lot of people working from home. There are folks that are here in the building, and we're doing the work of the city, and it's, these are tough times, but everybody's pulling together, so I'm very, very proud and feeling fortunate to be the mayor of a city that works so well together.
Thank you. And, oh, I apologize. Councilmember Little. I can't see your hand up there.
Sorry. I have the final word, but I wanted to just reiterate something that is similar, that, you know, they say when something bad happens, you should look to the helpers, and I think that that's always true in Summit, and as bad as the news that's coming in and as worried and scary as everybody is, the fact that Summit just always steps up to the plate and always protects its community and does the best for its community is really remarkable, and I think we can all take comfort in that. The donation coming into Grace and the Community Food Bank are remarkable. The effort Summit marches on to provide volunteers for our seniors and for people that are unable to go out because they're homebound for different reasons is unbelievable. The new flag organization really was up and running Saturday night and had already[1742.75]